All right, the time is 6:30. I will call to order this meeting of the Cedarburg School Board, Wednesday, February 21. This is a regular meeting of the Cedarburg School Board and is a public meeting. Prior notices have been placed in the district and additional copies were forwarded to the city and the town of Cedarburg, as well as to the News Graphic and Milwaukee Journal Sentinel. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Looks like we have some state proclamations. Laura Strobel?
The state of Wisconsin has declared the following proclamations. The week of March 8th through the, I'm sorry, March 4th through the 8th is National School Breakfast Week, and March 10th through the 16th is Child and Adult Care Food Program Week. All proclamations are available on the district's board docs webpage. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Dr. Clark, consent agenda.
All right, with regards to the consent agenda, board members, I ask that you approve the minutes from the regular board meeting on January 17th, 2024, the special board meeting on February 7th, 2024, the budget and finance report, which includes the summary of account, check register, check detail, and credit card transaction reports, and the personnel report. Mr. DeRosa, Director of Human Resources, will provide a brief overview of the personnel report.
Thank you, Dr. Clark. Only one name on the professional employee side where we're seeking board approval for a contract, as we all know, Ben Irwin is going to be some big shoes to fill, but through our interview process, had some outstanding candidates and very proud tonight to recommend Kim Zabel as the new Director of Business Services for the Cedarburg School District.
Kim would have loved to be here this evening, but she's actually presenting at a board meeting in Glendale. She does have a little letter there that you can look at, so you want to make sure that each of you received that, and she's looking forward to hopefully being able to come.
Yeah, we're going to invite her to the next meeting to see if she'll be interested in coming, if she can't. She's got a consulting position right now that kind of requires her to be pretty busy.
Yeah, she has over 10 years of experience in school districts, has really held every position, all the way up to Director of Finance, which she had that position for three years prior to going Baird, where she spent her last year, you know, working with several school districts across the state.
All right, is there anything else on the consent agenda?
Nope. Looking for a motion.
All right, we have a motion on the consent agenda.
I motion to approve the consent agenda.
I will second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion?
I do have just a quick couple of comments here. I'll be abstaining from tonight's vote, nothing against the hire at all, just from the budget, our, what is it, budget and finance report, there's some costs associated with the WASB convention, and I think my, thus far, I've abstained on votes where that's concerned. However, I do feel that those were very helpful to partake in, and there's a cost on there that shows up this time around that I don't think will be necessary next year, at least for myself, so I wanted to kind of update board members on that front, and then just highly encourage anyone that hasn't attended those to attend. There were several districts that had all of their board members or several of their board members and administration, and it's a very worthwhile experience, so I'll be abstaining, but I look forward to meeting this, is it Zabel? Am I pronouncing that right?
Zabel.
Zabel, and just thank you, board members.
All right, any other comments, discussion? All right, motion and a second. We'll take a vote, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So we've got one abstention and the rest are ayes, so that motion passes. Next, we have the superintendent report. Dr. Clark?
All right, thank you. This evening, I would like to highlight a select group of individuals who consistently work to make the Cedarburg school community the best it can be and who ensure our students' safety on a daily basis. These individuals are commonly known as our school crossing guards. This week, February 19th through the 23rd, is Wisconsin Adult School Crossing Guard Recognition Week, and I would like to personally thank Cedarburg School Crossing Guards Jerry Radke, Betsy Hackett, Marlene North, Joanne Kuhn, Brian Gel, Cindy Reed, Steve Barbanas, Kelly Wepley, Jim Lee, Debbie Gabbard, Peter Roush, and Dan Jevlosky. This is a picture, I actually had breakfast with about seven of them two Fridays ago, and so great opportunity to get to know them, hear a little bit of their stories and the interactions they have with our students, and so again, I really appreciate the work that they do on a day-to-day basis. So again, none of them are here tonight, but do want to thank them for their commitments to our students. This afternoon, we held our second teacher engagement council this year. The purpose of today's meeting was to provide information regarding teacher compensation and fund balance. Mr. Irwin, Mr. DeRosa, and I facilitated the presentation and entertained many clarifying questions. I believe it was a meaningful meeting and look forward to our next teacher engagement council meeting on April 3rd. At this time, Ms. Kirsten Collins will provide a review of our winter iReady assessment data.
I am pleased to present to you our winter assessment data. We utilize iReady as a part of our 23-24 assessment plan, and you can see it's that district standardized assessment, and it is something that we do three times a year for our students in grades 5K through 8. We'll start off with just a high-level overview of the students and their performance in both reading and math on the diagnostic assessment. This chart that you see here represents our students' performance by grade in the fall versus the winter assessment. Our students are placed on a continuum with their diagnostic results, and you can see the legend on the side. Anything green is going to show that students are somewhere on grade level. The darker green shows mid to above, lighter gray, green is early on grade level, yellow into the red colors into the intense red shows that students are below grade level. You can understand that in the fall, we would expect to see more of that yellow and red because our students are being assessed on the standards of the current grade that they are in. So it's a criterion reference test. Students are measured in accordance to and with respect to a criteria, and that would be grade level standards. So the top two bars is kindergarten, and you're seeing that green increase, and that's what we'd want to see. So we think about it, students at this point in January have received half a year of instruction. You would anticipate they might be early to on grade level. We have quite a few students who are actually mid or above. You can also note that here in reading, we're seeing that red just close, we're seeing more moving into that yellow and green area, so that's really what we'd like to see. Similarly, you'll see with math, oh, sorry, I jumped in aside, we also measure annual growth. So this is reading, so progress towards annual growth. Based on a student's starting point with their first assessment in the fall and their grade level, there's a typical growth that's expected based on those two pieces. So through the year, what we would want to see is all students meet at least typical growth. When we think about those students in that red and yellow area, we really want to see those students, if not all, have accelerated growth, have a stretch growth for them. What we know is that if students are able to meet stretch growth two years in a row, if they are in those red and yellow areas, two years in a row, meaning stretch growth, puts them on track to be on grade level. So it's really, really important for all kids to grow as much as we can, but for those students who are struggling with grade level standards, it puts them on the track to proficiency. So you can see our students right now, we have quite a high percentage of students who have already met annual typical growth in half of our school year. So that would be that green bar, the percentage of students who have already met that, and then we have the blue bar that represents the percent of students who have already met the annual stretch growth. Now we'll jump to math for 5K. I like math so much, I just wanted to jump right there. So here's our math performance levels for 5K through grade five. Again, the same color coding, and you can see a similar trend to reading. It's not anything we wouldn't expect. Our students are growing, and they're growing at a high rate, and you're seeing those red areas close, as with the yellow, more green, and by grade level, you can see some differences. When we move over to, we just jumped three slides in one click, move over to annual growth, progress towards annual growth, again, that annual typical growth, you can see the percentages of our students by grade who have already reached that typical growth, and the percent by grade that have already met the stretch growth goal. It's pretty impressive when you think about that. Moving into middle school, this is our reading performance levels. And then the annual growth and stretch growth measures. Some pretty high percentages of our students meeting that annual typical growth already. And for math at the middle school? And math progress towards their typical and stretch growth. So that's the diagnostic assessment, high-level overview. We also have contracted to use the personalized instruction in reading and math, and so we track that. We have recommended usage for efficacy, and so that would be 30 to 49 minutes per week per subject. So we track how are we doing with that, and we have had about 10 weeks approximately of reading instruction and 14 weeks of the math instruction. We actually had, I think, 11 in 15 weeks, but without some of our holidays and different things, the little, it's approximately 10 weeks. So that's the metric that's used. So these are the average lesson time on task per student, per week, per school. So each school is in that range. Then if we break it down by grade level, you can see what those ranges look like by grade level. So that was for our first semester of use. So that's what I have for you for the high-level overview. Questions?
Fantastic. No, it's really nice to see this in a big, kind of a high-level, big-picture view, and then, of course, and you can kind of drill down and you see where the students are that need help in the growth, you're able to target, or not you, obviously, but our instructors can target in on the issues. So we would expect to see these numbers, obviously, keep getting better.
Yes.
I had a question. If you go up to the slide for math, grade six to eight, with the bar graph for the three grades across, this one just jumped, that one, I was just kind of looking at, okay, the median, the bar that goes down the middle, it looked like on this slide that not as many of the students were, you know, in the dark green or the lighter green. Was that expected? Is this a trend at Webster? What are your thoughts on why this one had like fewer greens than the rest?
The math standards are rigorous. When you move to middle school, they're much more rigorous than the elementary math standards. They get very rigorous at eighth grade. When we look at forward exam performance and achievement, it's the similar, kind of profile of the students and their performance, because it is a very rigorous jump in terms of standards and accelerated learning is needed. So it's on track. We do see in the second half of the year that accelerated growth compared to the beginning of the year. It's not a concerning thing, it is a pattern of between the two, a forward exam and iReady, but they're both measuring the same standards-based.
So you're saying they'll catch up by the end of the year?
We see that generally.
And how many years has the illustrative math curriculum been used at Webster? The third year, so they're really like in tune with using it? Okay.
Are these all, did all of these students, like, I can't remember what year we implemented the benchmark?
The illustrative math.
What's that?
Illustrative math?
Yeah, the new.
Bridges at elementary?
Yeah.
So bridges at elementary, we tracked this back to, I'll have to, how many years? So we're at five years of bridges.
Okay, so they all would have been bridges?
At least a couple of years.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, three or more.
Okay.
Yeah.
I had a math, sorry, go ahead. I had a math question as well on slide 12, for the math average lesson time on task per student per week versus school. There's that 42.8 for Parkview, 33.6 for Thorson, 30.6 for Westlon, and yes, they're all within range. I'm just curious if there are that difference between Parkview and Thorson and Westlon. Thorson and Parkview have similar student numbers, but it's a pretty big difference there, and it's more akin to Westlon, which has a smaller student. So I'm just wondering if there's really a specific reason for that, if that's where our math interventionist was present more, maybe? I'm not sure. So I'm just a little bit curious about that, if you have insight.
We're actually having those conversations in the PLC teams to dive in and say, how is this, what is happening, what are you doing, and what are we, how are you fitting in minutes? This is average time on task. So when a teacher sets aside time for iReady, it's not measuring the half hour, it's actually measuring the time on task for the student, so interactivity in the portal, in the actual meat of the work. And so examining some of those things, when are we scheduling it, what does this look like? The other thing that we don't have a metric on that I don't have for you is the lesson pass rate.
Okay.
And that would be interesting to look at also, because if we had this, and I don't know off the top of my head what that looks like, and maybe Westlon students were passing the lessons at a rate of 80% on the first try versus another school who has to, you have to pass at a certain percentage rate to move on, that would tell us more. So they're digging into that data to figure out what is it, how do we, you know, get the most of it, and what is too much? Are we utilizing our core resources to their effectiveness or to efficacy also, and not substituting with this instead of our core resources? So those are the questions and the discussions that we're having.
Great, thank you.
So I had a question. Is there a way to see the breakdown with math of time spent by the kids during the school day versus after school? Because I know my daughter used it quite a bit after school in fifth grade, which would have raised that number significantly. So if we do have some kids that just love it, you know, and want to go through and do the lessons, would that affect?
It would, it would. We're having that conversation, too. We caution very much, you know, our teachers instructing with our students to say, don't encourage too much there, and if you know your students are using it at home, we have to track it very closely every day, because they might have some yellow flags or red flags, meaning yellow, they're not performing at a level, it's showing some struggle, they need to have a conversation with a teacher for explanations. If they continue at that yellow kind of track and they continue to get questions wrong, it'll shut off that actual standard or domain, and students cannot proceed anymore. So we never want students to practice something or struggle, practice something wrong, not understand and try to just get through it. We want that teacher conversation around the learning.
Because that's what my question for math for fifth and seventh grade, I mean, they're both at about 57 minutes, which is on average more than the recommended time, but that's an average, so how high, how much of a variance is there on that?
If that's the average, you know there's, you know, more. So I don't have that.
So is someone looking into why, you know, whether it's students doing it at home or is it just in the classroom? Because it's just, it could be very high for some students, and I think we wanted to keep it more at this 30 to 49-minute level per week.
I would say in our classrooms, we don't have that kind of time to show some of these higher numbers, so it would lead us to believe it's at home, outside of the classroom instruction time. So those are the conversations that we're having with the principals.
And then I had just one other question. When we go back to the, you know, the annual growth, do we know what percentage of our students in red are included in those numbers?
We do. Yep. Our building leadership teams are going into that data at the grade level, at the classroom level, and then we know exactly which students are where in those performance levels, and they're able to address that.
So are we comfortable to say the majority of them are in these growth numbers, or do we not know that?
Not at this time. We wouldn't be comfortable.
Yeah. Our teachers know.
Okay.
Yep. Okay.
Just kind of going back to address your question, Laura, between sixth and seventh grade. I have a seventh grader now, and math is a lot harder for her this year, so I'm wondering if it's the jump in topics, because sixth grade, you're kind of introducing some more of those difficult things, and in seventh grade, it seems like, okay, here we go. And I know she's spent a lot more time in iReady trying to help iron out, making sure she knows what she's doing and is comfortable, so.
In which grade was that?
She's in seventh grade now. Yep, so she was sixth grade last year, math didn't seem like too much, and she's very good at it, so she gets frustrated because it's much more difficult in seventh grade.
I don't know if we want to rely on iReady to be answering those, you know, that if they're having challenges.
Well, no, I just think it's showing that, obviously, it's being used more, you know, and if we've got more use, we have more flags and we have more data, so the teachers know exactly where to drill, you know, it could just be that the curriculum's more rigorous.
At the eighth grade level for math, our numbers are low because our students, we have a lot of students who are accelerated in math and actually are done with the content and personalized instruction. So our teachers do other supplementation with other resources, instead of the students are not participating in personalized instruction. So that's why you see that eighth grade drop.
I have one more math. Go ahead, Nick.
I was just going to ask if that's what the red asterisk is on the.
On yours, yeah.
Yeah. I had one more math question for sixth to eight. Would you say that the Webster Math teachers are confident that the iReady personalized instruction and the illustrative math curriculum are both like in line with what's being taught at each grade level and the skills and how they do the math, just because I know that that can really vary from curriculum to curriculum?
Yeah, I think it's good to see that, but we haven't had any complaints from, because you know, what we're teaching, what we're doing. So if you're looking at our growth, we are getting more than we've been given in the past, and Kristen's point about testing, you know, and it's actually, when we get diagnostic, we're at 40 to 50% of the year, and we haven't had some of those type of standards yet, so once we come to those type of standards in the next month or two, that's what I'd be really worried for.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think we're still on your.
Yep, we're still on, yep, all right. Thank you. Board members, each of you have been provided initial draft of the Cedarburg School District Pupil Nondiscrimination Self-Evaluation Report. This report is a requirement per Wisconsin Administrative Code PI 9.06. The purpose of the self-evaluation is to review the following areas: school board policies and administrative procedures, enrollment trends in classes and programs, methods, practices, curriculum, and materials used in instruction, counseling, and pupil assessment and testing, trends and patterns of disciplinary actions, including suspensions, expulsions, and handling of people harassment, participation trends and patterns, and school district support of athletics, extracurricular and recreational activities, trends and patterns in awarding scholarships and other forms of recognition and achievement provided or administered by the district, school district efforts to achieve equality of educational opportunity and nondiscrimination, and school district technology, including electronic communications by school district staff. The district is accepting comments from pupils, teachers, administrators, parents, guardians, and residents on this report through March 30th of 2024. A notice will be placed in next week's News Graphic. Comments should be emailed or sent to Kara Amundson, Director of Student Services. That concludes my report.
Thank you. All right, so now we are at the public comment section. I don't have anyone signed up, but is there anyone here who wishes to make a public comment tonight?
Dave, before you do that, can I just ask a quick question for the item C?
Sure.
Are we still in that space? Dr. Clark, I apologize, I was kind of looking through your notes while you were speaking, and I, would you mind just reading that one more time so that I can make sure I understood what you said and see if I still need to ask a question?
Yeah, the last part. So the district is accepting comments from pupils, teachers, administrators, parents, guardians, and residents on this report through March 30th, 2024. A notice will be placed in next week's News Graphic. Comments should be emailed or sent to Kara Amundson, Director of Student Services.
Okay, so all board members received an email regarding how this is approached for the community and staff, and it going through News Graphic is what's been done for several years, and my request as a board member potentially for, you know, the future, is having that, what you just shared here at this meeting, also included in our newsletter that we know is read by the majority of families, in case they don't happen to listen to tonight's meeting, so that we can get as much input as possible. So thank you, thank you for rereading it.
Thank you.
And that's just my input as one individual at the table.
Thank you, thanks. So do we have anyone for a public comment? It looks like we do not. So then we will go to item six, recommendations. Dr. Clark?
This evening, we will be presenting five recommendations to the board. The first recommendation is to accept the occupational and physical therapy contractual agreement with Rehab Resources for the 2024-25 and 25-26 school years. This agreement locks in an hourly rate of $75.50 for physical therapy services and $60 for occupational therapy services. Our current agreement is with Rehab Resources, and we have been pleased with the strong relationship that has been developed.
And you need a motion to approve, right?
To approve, correct.
I would make a motion to approve the contractual agreement with occupational and physical therapy.
I will second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we will take a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
All right. The next two recommendations come from the long-term capital projects list. We are looking to replace the translucent panel system in front of the fieldhouse and pool area at the high school. For those of you, if you've driven by, you'll notice that there's two panel sections where it's white, because the outer part of the panel has blown off, and so you just have the fiber insulation exposed right there. We're also looking to replace two HVAC rooftop units at Webster Middle School. replace two HVAC rooftop units at Webster Middle School. Part of, as mentioned before, these are part of the long-term capital projects. This would be a total of, or Fund 46 expenditure of what we'll be proposing of $349,422, which does still allow for an increase in our Fund 46 balance, adding another $150,000 approximately. So that by the end of 2024, we should still have $1,812,462 in there. So the first thing I am looking, examples of the translucent, the two white areas are where the outer portion has blown off.
Can I back you up just a second?
You can, yes.
Sorry. On the numbers, are you recommending that we're, we're gonna fund this instead of the Fund 46?
Essentially, that's what would happen. So if we, yeah. Yep. So if we were trying to put $500,000 into Fund 46, but then we're immediately pulling out 349.
Basically the same. And then you mentioned that it blew off. Do we make an insurance claim?
These are out of warranty. The warranty ended about 19 years ago.
Well, I'm saying no, but from an insurance, like, was there like a, like a wind? Did it just fall off over time?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah. It was a degradation tool, not necessarily the, yeah. Yeah. So what I'm looking for today is a, excuse me, a recommendation to, for the board to approve the proposal from W L Hall Company of $163,512 to replace the CHS translucent panel system. We did get two bids. As I mentioned, W L Hall, which is based in Hartford, Wisconsin, and then Spect Pro, which is based in Omaha. You'll notice that the Hartford price is a little bit more, but our feeling is that with the local connection, the ability to get some better service and support, as we hope for these to last 40 more years or 40 years, would be a little bit stronger there.
And it looks as though the Hall bid has a better warranty as well, I noticed.
Yes. The other part too, that I, I feel strongly about is the Hall bid, the individual came out, I walked with him, we looked at everything, he took it, all of it. Spect Pro's bid, which hold still or hold true, was just based on the original renderings of the, the design. So they wouldn't come out here until they actually were gonna do the work.
I motion to accept the translucent, translucent panel replacement proposal submitted by W L Hall. I would second that motion.
A motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I just, my thoughts on this are very quick, I hope. I think it's important that we have the ability as a district to differentiate between these prices and choose the one that is slightly higher, given each of the things that you shared, Kate, with the insurance aspect, the local connection. And I'm, I appreciate that we have that latitude to do so.
Any other comments?
Can you go back to the Fund 46 slide again? So I guess we're approving these, we're talking about these two items, but I mean, are, where, can we leave the Fund 46 deposit still a bit open on the budget?
Oh, sure. Yeah. I mean, cause this is, this is all projected based on some of the things we've talked about and some of the things that the board has, has wanted to do. Yeah. Nothing has been solidified until, you know, we actually do approve a budget.
Right. And to your point, Laura, we're gonna need to find that. And we, we normally budget for 500,000 and that's insufficient, given the, you know, the long-term plan. So we have, we do have to find a way to bump that up. So I'm hopeful that we will do that.
Correct. Thank you.
All right. Any more discussion on this? All right. We'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
All right. We are also recommending the board approve the proposal from Johnson Controls of $185,910 to replace the two HVAC rooftop units at Webster. At Webster Middle School, there are seven rooftop units. Six of them were installed in 2001. One of them was installed in 2002. These are past end of life, but we're doing what we can to keep them going. One of the biggest issues with these is that the controllers get old and are no longer usable. It is really hard to find controllers. They're not making them anymore. So part of the thought here is if we replace two of these units with brand new units, we'll take out the controllers of the two units we take, we remove, we'll send those in to be reconditioned so that when the other five units, their controllers go out, we'll just be able to replace them with these new. The thought is that we'll get, get many more years out of those other five units by being able to do that with our, our controllers.
And the controllers are not refurbishable on the others, apparently?
Well, there aren't any other products out there. So if one goes down, I mean, it could take months to get it, get it done. And then you're, you're down a unit. So, yeah. And without the controllers, the units are worthless. Yeah. So again, looking for a recommendation to approve. The Johnson Controls, we did get three bids. You can see those right there. Johnson Controls, the lowest bid. Part of the reason for that is everybody has to use Johnson Control, Controllers. So even when we went with the other two companies, at some point, they would be contracting with Johnson Controls to put the controllers in. So.
I did have a question. I noticed that the proposal doesn't include if there is asbestos or lead paint. I would assume though, that since the units that are being replaced went in in '01 and '02, that any issues there would be with those would have been taken care of at the point.
Correct. And, and all of this is on the roof, on the, on the roof replacement. So, so yes, to what you said, but also this isn't really an internal in the building work.
Sounds good. Jared, and when we refurbish those controllers, do we then have to store them?
Yeah. And Ricky would have to find a place. Rick would have to find a place to put those. Yeah. And Todd, who is our HVAC guy, you know, he's got a whole, whole area where he stores all of the, the supply parts for when things go down.
So it's not like we're turning it over to Johnson and they?
No, no, no. Those are ours. Yep. So we would be, we'd send them in, we'd get them refurbished, they would come back to us and we would keep them on site so we could use them as soon as needed.
Was this in the regular part of the budget then? It's not coming out of 46?
No, this also would be coming out of 46. So that was that. So in here.
Oh, you had both of them.
Yep, I had both of them.
Gotcha. Sorry, I didn't see that.
Yep.
I appreciate the fact that you got multiple bids and also just the creativity instead of just saying they all have to be replaced.
Yeah, absolutely.
So thank you.
Yeah. I mean, honestly, in our, in our original conversation, we did talk about, well, do we just do one? And the challenge of that was these, all these units are getting pretty old and the probability that we lose two, two go down at the same time is pretty high. And so getting two would allow us one, we'd always have an extra one in the cycle. And if we did happen to lose two, we could easily keep going.
Yeah, absolutely. What Laura said, we appreciate it. Cause it's, it's gonna take, it does take creativity to make this work with the budget. So.
Well, I'll, I'll say one of the interesting things too is when we first looked at it, they were quoting us a price of approximately, and again, they're all estimates, approximately 140,000 to do one. And so then they're like, okay, but they wanted us to do all seven. Like, no, we're not gonna do all seven. What do you got if we just do two? And we came out back with 185 and like, okay. I appreciate that. Yeah.
Good. And so you need a motion? Do we have, we don't have a motion yet.
No, no.
I would make a motion to approve the HVAC contract with Johnson Controls.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Any further discussion on this? All right. Let's take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
All right. The next recommendation is for the board to approve a resolution designating the Thorson Elementary School Nature Center as a school forest. Up here, I have some information regarding it. I'll be honest, this, when I first heard about this, I thought, man, this is too good to be true. So I actually called the director from the, that manages it for the state of Wisconsin. She works at, out of UW Stevens Point. And yeah, this really is one of those things that is almost too good to be true. So we actually have eight acres at Thorson Elementary School that is currently called their nature center. That's in the, in the back area there. It would be on the east side. The designation as a Wisconsin school forest actually, I'm not gonna say necessarily assigns, but gives us access to Wisconsin DNR Forester, who will create a plan, a management plan to ensure that we've got a lot of native grasses and trees and different things in there. It also provides us access to free samplings and free saplings and free seeds if we want to plant new trees. And it also gives us access to school forest grants that come up. CSD retains all ownership. We have the ability to do whatever we want to with that land. Not that we're looking to do it, but if we wanted to suddenly dock it all down and add another school there, we certainly could. So there is no limitations onto what the district does with this. Right now, the Webster Forest Preserve is already designated as a school forest. Likewise, the Parkview Elementary School Forest is a Wisconsin school forest. And, you know, those of you that have seen Parkview and their forest, took down a lot of trees, ash trees that were dead and fell down. Last year, we did a lot of work there. We have the ability to get some free saplings and, and different seeds there to, to help plant it back. The diagram that you have up here, it's just a, a computer modeling of it, but there's approximately eight one, 8.01 acres that are currently woods or meadows that would be part of this program.
You mentioned that DNR plan. Is that something that's optional to?
Yeah. Whether, I mean, yeah, they create it and we, we do with it as we so choose.
Yeah. I think, my understanding too is there are no, there are no strings attached to this.
Correct. Nope.
Could you just, so I'm just looking over the resolution and the wording and quick question. So Parkview and Westlon are already designated and I'm sure.
Webster, Webster.
Sorry, excuse me, Webster. So where does Westlon fall in this? Who contacted you about Thorson, but we haven't heard about Westlon?
Yeah. So the difference in Westlon is the woods there is actually owned by three different entities.
Okay.
We have a small sliver of it. The majority is by the Lutheran Church and the city of Cedarburg. So it wouldn't be impossible to get that done. We would just need, if we decided to go that route, we'd need authorization from both of them.
Sure.
To do a resolution, they'd have to do their, their own things. This was a third grade teacher at Thorson who reached out and.
So, okay. So that was my second question. If this was something from the green team?
Yep.
Okay. So I'll put this out there, a thank you to our green team volunteers who keep an eye on these things, areas that are not at all my specialty. So I just want to put a thank you out there publicly for members of the green team at, at Parkview and Thorson, right? They both, I think all three have them.
Yep.
So, so that's that. And apologies for my confusion on my wording there. And resolution wise, was this drafted by Brenda?
So yeah, and they, you get, there's a template from the state.
Okay.
And we just plug in the, the information that's relevant to our district.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
All right. So we would, I would entertain a motion regarding this resolution.
I would make a motion to approve the resolution for the Thorson Woods.
I'll second that. All right. With the motion and the second, is there any comment or discussion? Seeing none, let's take a vote. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes unanimously.
All right. Thank you. The last recommendation is regarding donations to the district. This evening, we have a $1,000 donation from the Gen Met Corp. to the CHS Robotics Program and a $4,029 donation from the Crease Club Incorporated to the CHS Boys and Girls Lacrosse Programs. If the board approves these, the total donations for February is $5,029 and for the school year is $58,089.80. I'd be looking for a recommendation, a motion to approve the donations.
I'll motion to approve.
I will second.
Having a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? I'll just reach out to the community and thank you for the generosity, everybody. It's always great to, to see that, the total and how generous the community is. We appreciate that a great deal. All right. Motion and a second. Do we, let's take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion also passes unanimously. All right. Now we're due committee reports. And so we've got a curriculum committee report and a, it's not really a committee, but the WASB delegate report. So we'll start with that from our delegate Connie Kincaid.
Thank you. So this agenda is written as 2024 WASB Delegate Assembly, January 17th, 2024. The, so I mentioned earlier, my comments regarding the convention as a whole. So what I'll share just now is in relation to only the delegate assembly, which occurs on January 17th in the afternoon. I felt it probably the most straightforward and efficient use of our time to just kind of read what was provided at that meeting. And then if board members have questions, you're welcome to ask individually. That, that's how that goes. So there were 10 resolutions that were proposed. 11 were, were ultimately brought before the delegate assembly. Opportunities for individuals from any school district in attendance were provided to comment on each of those different resolutions. All of the resolutions did pass and there were two, two additional resolutions that did not receive votes to go to further, further votes in conversation. So it was a really interesting process. I gleaned a great deal from serving on the, the committee as well as your delegate. My hope is that there are further conversations on how our board can participate in this to a greater extent. Very valuable, very appreciative of our community and the ability to attend that delegate assembly. Thank you.
Fantastic. Now, are you, you said you had a list or a summary that you were gonna make available? Are you gonna post it? Or are you gonna send it to Jared and maybe and he can circulate it?
My understanding was that it was sent to our superintendent and to you and to me.
Okay.
So it's likely in your emails. If it's not, I'm happy to provide the hard copy.
I don't think I've seen any of it. Okay. I'll watch for it. Thank you.
It would be, Dave, it would be from December. So it would be a little ways back.
Oh, I see. Okay. Yeah. Say we do have that. Okay.
But yeah, if anyone needs to see any hard copies, feel free to reach out to me.
Sorry. I thought there was something that came out of the January meeting. So, all right. Okay. So the final committee report would be the curriculum committee. Elizabeth?
We met February 7th and the topic was K through 8 ELA updates and recommendations and discussed how the pilots went of the four different curriculums at the five, K5 through fifth grade and then sixth to eighth grade levels. And the recommendation was for the Amplify CK LA curriculum at the elementary level and the into literature at the sixth through eight level. And we will be meeting next on March 14th, 2024. And part of that meeting will be to discuss that, any questions that committee members or board members had, doing like their deep dive reviewing and looking at the curriculums that were recommended. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. At this time, I will invite a motion to adjourn into executive session to consider financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary considerations of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons, except where paragraph B applies, which if discussed to public would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations pursuant to section 19.851F of the Wisconsin statutes. And under that section, we have A, consider budget impact to accommodate the needs of a specific student. Then we would also be convenient to executive session to deliberate or negotiate the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified business, I'm sorry, public business, whenever competitive or bargaining reasons pursuant to section 1, 19.851E of the Wisconsin statutes. And this would be to consider people transportation contract negotiations. The board may reconvene it to open session and may take action on one or more of the executive session items, which would also potentially include the approval of minutes of the executive session meeting from January 17th of 2024. So that's the motion I would entertain.
I would make a motion to adjourn into executive session.
I will second.
All right. Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right. We're gonna take a roll call vote. So let's say, start with Kincaid.
Aye. Is that right?
Okay. Tavaji?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Creers and I. Strovol?
Aye.
Nettle?
Aye.
Anne Sharlin?
Aye.
All right. That motion also passes unanimously. We are in executive session. Thank you. All right. That motion also passes unanimously. We are in executive session. Thank you.